We'd like to call to order the July 31st meeting of the Ann Arbor Board of Education. Trustee Lightfoot, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Ms. Hilton, may we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Lightfoot?
Yes, here.
Trustee Johnson?
Here.
President Mitchell?
Present.
Trustee Kelly?
Here.
Trustee Gaynor?
Yes.
Trustee Lazarus?
Here.
Trustee Basset?
Thank you. I now like to introduce our non-voting member at the table, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Janice Swift.
Good evening.
Everyone, before we get into the business of the board, we have a few moments of silence for staff members, students, and that have passed on during the summer break.
Dr. Swift? The first person is Theron Brooker Nolan.
Thank you, Madam President and trustees. Theron Joseph Brooker Nolan, a rising eighth grade student at Scarlet Middle School, passed away on Saturday, July 13th, 2019, at the age of 13. Theron was born on February 16th, 2006. He was a compassionate person who cared deeply about people and animals. He loved video games and was an aficionado of comic books, graphic novels, and movies. He loved basketball and was a huge Detroit Pistons fan. Those who knew Theron knew that he was a sneaker head, he loved to create things and was an artist, and no matter the activity, music was always a part of it. Theron attended kindergarten through fifth grade at Mitchell Elementary and was a Scarlet Middle School student for his sixth and seventh grade years. Theron is survived by his loving mothers, Leslie Brooker and Bonnie Brooker Nolan, his grandparents Theron and Diane Brooker, many loving uncles, aunts, cousins, and dear relatives and friends. In keeping with Theron's spirit of generosity and his strong desire to help others, his family is working to establish a fund at Scarlet Middle School that will support students in need of financial assistance to participate in enrichment activities such as summer camps, athletics, and so on. We all join together this evening on behalf of the Board of Education, Ann Arbor Public Schools, and our Ann Arbor community to extend our thoughts of loving support and deepest sympathy to the family and friends, teachers and staff, and all who knew and loved Theron.
Please join us in a brief moment of silence.
Our next moment of silence is for Ms. Kathy Mahoney. Dr. Swift?
It is with great sadness that we remember this evening Carpenter Teacher Consultant Katherine Schultz Mahoney, who passed away suddenly at home on July 24th, 2019, at the age of 56. Kathy was born in Ann Arbor, Michigan, graduated from Hudson High School in Hudson, Ohio. Kathy earned a BA from Salem College in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Later, she received her elementary teaching certificate from Mount St. Joseph University in Cincinnati, Ohio, and a master in special education from Madonna University in Livonia, Michigan. Kathy was a devoted teacher in both Cincinnati and Ann Arbor Public Schools. The last seven years, she served as a full-time teacher consultant at Carpenter Elementary. At an early age, Kathy discovered a love of horses, becoming an accomplished rider and showing her horses throughout high school. Later, she became a loving groom and mentor for her daughter Caitlin when she became interested in horses as well. Kathy was devoted to her husband Frank, her daughter Caitlin, her mother Kay, and the many students that she taught. Her love, gentleness, and strength will continue to touch the lives of students, friends, and loved ones for many years to come.
We also want to honor Dr. Kathleen Anne Robinault.
Dr. Kathleen Anne Robinault, book depository manager and office professional at Pioneer High School, passed away peacefully in her sleep Sunday, June 30th, 2019, with her family by her side. Kathy was a wonderful wife, mother, and friend to all who knew her. She was born on April 19th, 1956, in St. Louis, Missouri, and spent most of her childhood in Lima, Ohio. She graduated with a BS in speech pathology from the University of Cincinnati in 1978, received her MA in speech pathology from Auburn University in 1980, and her PhD in speech pathology from the University of Michigan in 1985. In 1983, she and her husband Bill were married and became the parents of three sons. She found particular joy in her children and their friends, helping each find their passion and always encouraging them to continue to grow and learn. Kathy found passion in volunteer work and her faith, first at St. Anne's Catholic Church in Marietta, Georgia, where she was on the Women's Guild, ran the yearly Apple Annie Arts and Crafts Show, and won the parish's Woman of the Year Award in 1998. She channeled this volunteerism once again upon moving to Ann Arbor in 2001, where she served in various roles on the PTSO Board at Pioneer High School from 2002 through 2011, including Athletic Booster Club President from 2008 to 2010. Jackie is survived by her husband, William A. Bill, and her three sons, Jack, Sean, and Franklin, as well as many dear family members and friends.
Please join us in a moment of silence for both of our wonderful staff members. Trustees, you have the agenda before you. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? If not, may I have a motion for the agenda?
So move.
You'll have a second. That was trustee Johnson moving and trustee Lazarus seconding. May we have a roll call?
Trustee Lightfoot?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
President Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Kelly?
Here.
Trustee Gaynor?
Yes.
Trustee Lazarus?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you, trustees. Ms. Hilton, do we have anyone signed up for public commentary?
Yes, ma'am, we do. Ms. Candace Roth, followed by Mr. Mike Basset, please.
Hello, my name is Candace Roth, and I'm a Lawton Elementary School parent. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors for a nonprofit called Real School Safety. We are a group of parents who are trying to advocate for safer schools with the use of technology. As we all know, the Lawton community has found itself front and center of local, state, and national news media in the last few weeks. This is an unwelcome notoriety that raises concerns within the community about the security and safety of our students, teachers, staff, and administrators. These concerns are particularly acute in light of the disturbing trends that we've seen in our society, including a rise in divisive rhetoric and horrendous acts of violence. Given the unfortunate age in which we are currently living, we urge the board to consider additional safety measures at all of Ann Arbor Public Schools, but also specifically at Lawton Elementary School. Thank you.
Mr. Mike Basset, followed by Ms. Lori Moore, please.
Dr. Swift and board, thank you for letting me speak. I'm here today because, Dr. Swift, thank you, you broke a pledge to me, a personal pledge for transparency. If it weren't for the gentleman in the fifth row of this auditorium, this event tonight would not be recorded, and I don't know why that is or whose decision that was. I will follow up with an email to you and the board requesting that information. What I'm most alarmed at today is that you pledged to me transparency. You said that you would disclose and be open and honest with the community. You and Comsa lied. You had a FOIA request from Ann Arbor Live, M-Live, that requested information about a criminal investigation being conducted at Lawton. You stated you could not answer because that was being conducted. That was a lie. You lied about that. There was no investigation. You made an investigation the day that you were made aware of that. People have been disbarred for less than the error or oversight or deliberate action that you and Comsa did, and I would like answers, and so would the community. Thank you.
Ms. Lori Moore, followed by Ms. Amy Jordan, please.
I find myself in an unusual position. This is where I went to middle school, and so now here I am addressing the board. So it's just kind of like a come-home for me, if you will. I am here, I teach at Lawton, and I am here to ask you for your support for the staff at Lawton. As mentioned previously by Ms. Roth, we are in a very unusual situation. No one could have predicted, no one could have anticipated, but we need your support. We have been given no one to talk to, no one to turn to, no one to advise us on what do we do, and so we've each sat home in our houses, worrying and fretting and doing those things that unfortunately we Type A teachers do best. Okay? So I'm here to ask you to please, as we move forward into the beginning of the school year, that you consider how as a staff we are feeling, in terms of safety, as again was mentioned, but again, how do we go forward with all the unknowns that we have in the very near future? And I'm going to only speak for myself here, okay? I do not want another email with vapish comments that basically tell me, "Just go on and do your job." Because let me tell you, the staff at Lawton always goes on and does their job. We are the backbone of that community, combined with the parents, that make that community great. So I ask you, please, think of us, know that we are out there worrying and trying to figure out how do we move forward, and we need a plan, some plan of action that we can say, "Oh, okay, now I get it. Now here's what I'm going to do, and here's how we're going to approach it as a staff and a community." Thank you very much.
Ms. Amy Jordan, followed by Ms. Jessica Gilbert, please.
Good evening. I'm Amy Jordan, and I am a parent of four children at Lawton Elementary. And as a parent, I have had the opportunity to go to Safety Town this week, and I've been able to connect with several parents at Safety Town, as well as a lot of my neighbors, and we are all very concerned about the safety of the students and the staff, especially at Lawton Elementary. Also asking that, I've also talked to a lot of parents, and we have sent many emails to the staff, asking what to expect this school year, and I'm asking that we receive some answers to our emails. Thank you very much.
Ms. Jessica Gilbert, please.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Gilbert, and I have two students currently at Lawton Elementary. I have an incoming fifth grader and second grader. I just also wanted to concur with some of the other people that were previously speaking that I have concerns about the safety of the school and what the school year is going to be like, given the circus that is going on right now. And just my opinion, I'm very displeased with the way the school board has handled this whole situation, starting back in April. I feel that the parents were given no information and are still given no information, and we've been left in the dark. There's a lot of parents that are very concerned about this incoming school year, and we feel that we have nobody to discuss it with. Thank you.
That completes public commentary.
Dr. Swift, any items for clarification?
Yes, Madam trustee, and Madam President and trustees, members of the community, I will clarify just one thing, and that is, there is a camera on the other side of the auditorium. That is our camera, and this meeting is being videotaped, and we share those videotapes via Facebook, via social media. It is true that it's not livestreamed on CTN this evening. That is typical of July board meetings, but we take every step that we can to ensure that our information is out for everyone to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hilton, do we have any reports from associations tonight?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you. The president's report.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Just a clarification. Can you tell me what camera is recording this?
This recording.
I was told that it's just recording the superintendent's report in the WISD presentation.
It's recording the entire?
It's recording the entire?
Yes, sir.
And that will be available?
It will be available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This evening, I'm going to be very brief, as we have items we would like to get to. Summer is coming to an end, and parents are starting their countdown clocks to send their children back to our wonderful staff, and we are getting ready for them. I've been around the district and a couple of schools, and parking lots are full of construction and inside the buildings, so I'm just happy that we are getting ready for our students to return. Other than that, I don't have anything else this evening, and so I'm going to pass the mic on to Dr. Swift.
Good evening, Madam President and trustees. We'll be brief with the superintendent's report this evening. We are busy preparing for the opening of the 2019-20 school year, just over a month now until we start, and you can see on the photos here, we've been out taking photos so that folks will see the progress that we're making in our facilities work, several million dollars of facilities work being overseen by Mr. Dimitru and Mr. Lautzana. I want to give a special shout-out, not only to our facilities, folks, and partners working on the buildings, but also to our ABM team who are rehabbing the facilities and making sure that they are, the floors are waxed and they are clean and ready to start bright and clean for the return of our students on September 3rd. As you know, trustees, we have many summer programs in progress now, just right at 5,000 registrations for RECON Ed summer camps that are in progress, and we're also wrapping up a very successful summer academic program, Summer Learning Institute. We would like to make a special mention of the Summer ESL Academy for students whose first language is something other than English. So over 221 students attended a full 15-day program, more than double the number who participated last year. This year, every year their program has a focus, and this year the program focused on interviewing multilingual community members to document and share the positive impact that immigrants have on our community. We commend Evelyn Darty and Katie Gibson, lead teachers, for their Summer ESL Academy, for their efforts to ensure all English-language learners have equal access to summer in regular school curriculum and programs in our district. I think it would be appropriate also to give a big shout-out to U of M, whose graduate students participate in that program. They're ELL students right alongside our teachers and staff. Yesterday was the 40th anniversary, one of our parents mentioned, of Safety Town. Students and parents were greeted by Mayor Christopher Taylor, Ann Arbor's new police chief, Michael Cox, members of the police and fire departments, officers of U of M's Division of Public Safety and Security, and it was a great pleasure for me to join in over there yesterday morning to celebrate 40 years of Safety Town. This summer alone, more than 700 children, about 720 children, have participated in the program and received tips on how to safely interact with dogs, water, electricity, and much more. AAPS RECON Ed recently collected stories in the community of how Safety Town has positively impacted the lives of children and families. I would like to highlight just a few of the responses. Someone said, "We love that our son survived what could have been a fatal bike accident while wearing his properly-fitted Safety Town helmet." "Kids listen to officers better than they do to parents sometimes, and my son wore his helmet tight and low, just like he's supposed to." "The helmet shattered, and he had a mild concussion, but all involved overall said what would have happened without the good helmet, he very easily might have died." Someone else says, "My son came home and made us practice a fire escape plan at the house. He changed all of the smoke alarm batteries and still, at 11, makes us practice regularly. Safety Town had a deep impact on me. I burst out in a rendition of 'Let the Ball Roll' to my grandchildren anytime a ball exits my yard into the street. This has prevented many a catastrophe." "My son still remembers some of the safety rules that he learned while out on the town and mentioned them when he was learning to drive. They really do take it in and use it appropriately. Safety Town has a very positive impact, and we thank you for all that went into it way back then." I just want to give a shout-out to Ms. Jenna Bacalour and all of our RECON Ed division. I got to meet many of our team members there yesterday, as well as the city officials and our volunteers, and there are literally hundreds of volunteers that come in and help all of these four- and five-year-olds make it through their safety learning. Tomorrow morning, Middle School, English Language Arts, and Math Project Lead the Way camps will have a celebration beginning at 11:00 a.m. They will share what they've learned at the two camps, offer ideas for continued summer learning, and enjoy refreshments. ELLA camp will meet in Huron's Media Center in various classrooms on the first floor south of the arch. Math Project Lead the Way camp will meet in Huron's Greenhouse, and Project Lead the Way lab, you can see some of their PLTW activities from this week. That lab is on the second floor north of the arch, in case folks want to join. The Washtenaw County Stuff the Bus Campaign is underway through Friday in partnership with the United Way. Donations of school supplies are being accepted at the Target stores in Ann Arbor, Celine, and on Carpenter Roads. Among the supplies in greatest need are pencils, pens, and backpacks. The school supplies are donated to students across Washtenaw County, including throughout the Ann Arbor Public Schools. I hope to get over there to Target before the end of the week, and hope that you all will find time to do so also. Monday, August 26th, at 10:00 a.m., we're so excited, we will do a groundbreaking ceremony to recognize, and this kind of slipped up on me, trustees, but I hope you'll take note, we will recognize the groundbreaking of the 50th home built by the Ann Arbor Public Schools' home-building program. How quickly 50 years goes, huh? We extend a special invitation to all in the community and to members of the board to join us on Monday morning at 10:00, if you'd like to see that first turn of the shovel. Congratulations, special congratulations, to home-building teacher, Mark Valshin, chosen, recently chosen, and trustees, this one kind of got out ahead of me on social media, was recently chosen as a semifinalist for the 2019 Harbor Freight Tools for Schools Prize for Teaching Excellence. The award recognizes outstanding instruction in skilled trades in U.S. public high schools and teachers who inspire students to prepare for life after graduation. Here's the catchy part, the first-place winner will receive, and I actually believe, Mr. Cluley, you found out, they actually have to share, but it's a $100,000 prize, so this is a really big honor. Ann Arbor Public Schools was recently presented at the National School of Public Relations Association with an honorable mention on school district excellence in writing. If you've not taken a look at AAPS News lately, here it is, and it's easy to find right on the website or right from our Facebook page. We really want folks to be on there. The Excellence in Writing Award was presented for this story, "Community High School's Beloved Matriarch Is Still Going Strong and Loving It After 33 Years," written by AAPS News Editor Joe Mathis, and featuring, help me with the name. Yes, I know her, Judith DuWasson, and just a tremendous story and one example of the stories that you see on the AAPS News every week, and I will share that those news publications continue year-round. Stories have been coming out all summer, and so check that out so you don't miss some of what's going on in our large and busy district. And so with that, Madam President, trustees, members of the community, it's my honor to share the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Swift. Trustees, this evening, we are joined by Dr. Scott Menzel of the WISD. It's that time of year where it's election time, the time we get to exercise our civic right to vote, so, Dr. Swift.
First of all, welcome, Dr. Menzel. We're so glad that you're here this evening. Madam President and trustees, you've been well aware for several months that our ISD is working on a capital bond proposal that will be presented on the August 6th ballot. I just want to give a special shout-out to the ISD for the work that they've done on this, and we will be lending our support to make sure everybody has full information in order to make their decisions and get out to the polls on August 6th. And trustees, you will recall, this is a .37 mil, and it is dedicated to capital improvements to the High Point School. Dr. Menzel has agreed, and he's here this evening, to give us just firsthand information. If you would like, trustees, they also have some tours coming up of that property. Trustees, or anyone in the community, everyone's welcome to go through on one of the tours. I'm going to try to make one of those, Dr. Menzel. And trustees, I think you remember from my earlier briefings, but I just want to say it publicly, that I really appreciate the leadership of the WISD to place this item on the ballot, because there are other options in order to ensure a facility that would serve some of our some of our most heavily-impacted students in the county, their other option would be to use our special ed millage money that we approved, you know, just a couple of years ago. And that, of course, would have taken away from all of the funds that we have to serve our students. So, Dr. Menzel, I just want to give you a special call-out for taking a step so that we could protect the money that was designated for services to kids while also ensuring a facility that serves our students well. So with that, will, Dr. Menzel, pretty good, 6:05, to turn that over to you, and we'll hear. And trustees, I know that several of you prepared, and you know about this, and you're going to make remarks, but if it's all right, we'll have Dr. Menzel share first. Is that okay? Very good, Dr. Menzel.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'd also like to introduce Ashley Krasinski, who is our Communications and Public Relations Specialist, and she can remind me of the exact dates and times of our open houses, but I think one is Thursday at 5:30, and the other is Sunday at noon. Sunday at noon, so absolutely, we would welcome any member of the community to come through the facility for a tour. I'm going to move through the PowerPoint pretty quickly. I know you have some information in your packet as well, but I think there are some important points to make with respect to what High Point School is, who we serve, and what the particular facility challenges are that resulted in this bond request being put forward to the voters in Washtenaw County. So the school itself opened in 1975, and it initially provided services to students who were labeled trainably mentally impaired and focused on vocational services and programs for those students. Today, High Point serves students ages 3 to 26. Most of those students have severe cognitive and multiple impairments. We serve students from the nine public schools in Washtenaw County, and students, depending on when they start with us, can be with us for up to 23 years in the facility. Medical advancement, advances in technology have resulted in students who, in the past, in 1975, might have been hospitalized or institutionalized, they're receiving educational services in our facility. We share the space with three other programs, and I think it's important to point this out as well. Honey Creek Community School is a K-8 multi-age charter that's authorized by WISD. It was the second charter in the state of Michigan, and it was authorized because we believe that students with disabilities should be educated with typically-developing peers. As far as is possible, our local districts do the best to educate students with disabilities within your buildings. But there are some students whose needs are so significant, so we talk about low-incident, high-cost students, that across the county, it's more cost-effective to be able to educate them in a central location, and that's what High Point is. However, we didn't believe, the ISD didn't, and this is prior to my arrival, that it was appropriate to educate them in isolation from other students. And so that's why that school is located there, and there are about 245 students at Honey Creek. Gretchen's House provides childcare and infant-toddler programs and a preschool room. That was, they were invited to locate on campus as a service to the employees of WISD. Now, there are other people that take advantage of it, there are other school employees in some neighboring districts, but that was part of the intent. And then the preschool program serves as another side-by-side opportunity, because we serve preschoolers with significant disabilities. More recently, because of some space challenges, the Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Program had to move out of one of the Ann Arbor facilities, and we were able to put that in the High Point building as well. So these three programs operate side-by-side and coordinate activities throughout the building for our students. This is the, the map that kind of illustrates what a creative architectural team could do in the 1970s, and it was a phenomenal design at the time. It was creative, the honeycomb shapes with centrums, and, and not a single classroom that looks like it's the same size, and certainly no square rooms, and, and space for storage also not there. You may recall that, that the blue area in the front here, I don't know if I can get this pointer, this used to be the Huron Valley Beauty School. Celine and Ann Arbor had their students for cosmetology here. They moved out probably a year, year and a half ago to a new location, but the facility has undergone, you know, small modifications over time. But the last time Washtenaw ISD went to the voters in the county for a facilities bond was 30 years ago. And so we've been using operating dollars to make the kinds of changes that are needed to, to do the day-in-and-day-out kinds of work with the operating funds. As we took a look at where we are in the, the needs of the facility currently, we realized the building's getting close to 50 years, the mechanical equipment is, is nearing or at end of useful life, and the cost of just replacing heating and cooling units was approaching $10 million. Then we have roof repairs that are required. We've got technology infrastructure. We, we still don't have a way to attend to some of the challenges related to storage in the building. And so as we started looking at all of those costs, some of which are non-negotiable, you have to have functioning heating and cooling systems, and you can't have roofs that leak, and the cost at that level, we had a conversation with the superintendents last August and said, you know, it, it probably makes sense to look at what's the next 40 to 50 years look like in the High Point facility, and what is a more appropriate investment of taxpayer resources? And it, it became pretty clear very quickly that spending $18 million in a facility that doesn't meet the needs of our students today is not a good use of taxpayer dollars compared to putting something in place that while it will cost a little bit more on the front end, over time is going to be an investment that meets the needs of our kids more appropriately. So as you can see, the students that we're serving, we have amazing stories of, of success. We were recently recognized as a move model site for some of the curriculum we do. We have parents who tell stories about the things that they've been able to do as a result of the implementation of that curriculum. And tonight, I'm going to go through things very quickly. We would love to come back and even have some of those parents present to you if you have an interest at some point. So we looked at approximately $18 million to do the bare-bones essentials in the facility. But if, if you have a chance to walk through, or if you've been through the building, you'll know that many of the corridors are very narrow, they're dark, you need breadcrumbs to find your way from place to place in the building. I've been the superintendent here since 2011, and I still wander the halls and have to remember which way to turn in order to get back to where I started. The building is not fire-suppressed. We have these barriers in many of the door frames, and so getting wheelchairs, especially larger motorized wheelchairs, through the facility becomes a challenge. And then if you have other students in the hallway, it's even more difficult. So as we re, we said, and we've coined this reimagining High Point, we wanted to be able to keep the parts of the building that work, and the gymnasium and the pool space are functional with some renovations. They don't need to be torn down, and those are expensive parts of a facility to build. And so we're actually going to present a proposal that looks at building around that core, but attends to the needs of our students in some pretty significant ways. So we'll renovate and modify the pool and the gym area, demolish the honeycomb-shaped areas of the building, and put in 30 to 35 classrooms, room for special subjects. Right now, there's not an art room or a music room. We do that all on a cart for our students. The music therapy for our students with disabilities is pretty phenomenal, and we've got an amazing teacher. And again, come and visit anytime, and you'll see just how powerful that can be. But we don't have designated space for that. We will also be able to maintain and improve age and ability-appropriate outdoor playscapes, create proper storage, and you'll see some pictures in here where things are just out in the open, because there's no place to store it. We'll have the kind of furniture and equipment that meets the needs of our students. Classrooms vary in size from about 600 square feet to 750. And just imagine putting in, in some classrooms, as many as nine wheelchairs, 750 square feet, the adults supporting the students in that room, there is no room to move around. In the new design, we'll have standard-sized classrooms, about 1,000 square foot each, that provide a more appropriate learning environment for our students. We also will be able to get some energy efficiencies as a result of the new construction, because this is an older building. And speaking of safety and security concerns, this building has, I don't know, 32 different exits and, and points, and people-prop doors, all of the things that you don't want in the 21st century to ensure that you know who's in your building, when they're in their building, to, to guarantee to parents that you've attended to the safety and security of their students. So I'm going to move through the guiding principles quickly. These were the things that helped us with our original thinking about what the facility could look like. And this, this plan that you see here in front of you is still evolving, but essentially, on the right-hand side, we have what we call houses. So this, imagine that you have a central entry point, and right now, our parking lot curves around, and students, when they get on the, off the bus and come into the building, are exposed to the elements. It is not a covered entryway into the building. And so you can imagine with some of our winter storms, some of our rainstorms, that, that our students in wheelchairs are exposed to a lot of elements, that is not optimal. In the new design, we'll have a covered drop-off place for the buses, so students have protected entry into the facility and out of the facility. It also has a, a main corridor here, so that it's, as students are coming in and after they come in, parents have to, to sign in here before they can get into the building. This separate entrance here is because we envisioned Gretchen's House, our youngest students, our preschoolers, and kindergarten for Honey Creek would be in this space. Again, it's about an integrated learning environment where similarly-aged students are co-located together, and so you've got eight classrooms per house, envision age, age progression through that, and these are the primary classroom corridors. If you think back to the image of the building now, you had three different honeycomb shapes, and you had to figure out where you were going, and couldn't remember who was located where. The wayfinding is pretty easy. If you want to get to the academic classroom pieces, you go to the right. If you want to get to some meeting spaces, this are offices for our speech and language, PTO, the other ancillary support, as well as administration. And then you get to the back, you have the, the dining room with the performing stage, a media center, which we have one that's really small in the center of the building with no windows. This one actually gives us a view out the back, along with an art room and, and a dedicated, dedicated music space here. So now we have something that actually functions like a school in a way that makes sense, has appropriate security mechanisms built in. High Point got its name because we are located in the highest point in Washtenaw County. So the views out the back are absolutely beautiful, and so we're proposing to take advantage of those by having good windows and daylighting throughout all aspects of the facility. But this is, again, just a schematic drawing, because we thought it was important to actually be able to show voters what we would be putting in place of the current facility. This is how it would sit on our current property, and I know that many of you have been to our, our Teaching and Learning Center over here, across the parking lot is where High Point is. You can see we have a lot of, of green space. There's actually a greenhouse on the, on the property that we would move, but continue to have. We've got natural wetlands and, and places for nature-based education all around the facility. So we're, we're able to, instead of having to find a different place to build this, which was one of the things we looked at, we're able to take advantage of the, the top agrar, the fact that we're on a high point and not bring in so much fill in order to be able to make this work, nor do we have to spend cost to acquire land, because we already own it. You can see the aerial from the existing building. Again, it looks really cool, it just doesn't function for the needs of our students today. And a schematic drawing of what it would look like potentially, given the proposal that we just talked about, with the covered parking, a straight line of, of drop-off and pickup, and then the various houses for the classrooms there. So then the question becomes, what's it going to cost? And what we're estimating is that it will cost about $53.3 million to do this. We've had to take into account the variability in construction cost more recently, and so that's a part of what, what is included there. But, but in order to generate that, we have to levy .37 mils over a 10-year period of time. And actually, that's even a little misleading, because it's only on nine tax bills. If the voters approve this on August 6, the first time they would see the .37 mils levied would be in the summer tax bill of 2020. And so it's really nine tax bills, but a 10-year period because of approval being in August of 2019. So for a homeowner with a market value home of $100,000, it's $18.50 a year. If you're at $200,000 market value, $100,000 taxable value, it's $37 a year, and you can see, see the scale from there. So in contrast to what most of our traditional K-12 districts do with a longer bonding period of time, and you have a lot more facilities to manage, we're able to do this in a shorter period of time, so that the voters are actually paying for the asset, and, and I would hope that people see that, given we haven't been to the voters for 30 years, that we do a, a really intentional job of maintaining the facilities we have, but at some point in time, every facility gets to the end of its useful life, and you have to make a decision about whether or not you can renovate, or if you have to build new. In this case, given the footprint of the building, it's a combination renovation and build-new, and we believe that it will actually meet the needs of our students both now and into the future. If, if it doesn't pass, as Dr. Swift mentioned earlier, we would have to take money from operating dollars in order to be able to do the required heating and cooling, roof repair, some of the core infrastructure things that must be attended to. We are authorized under state statute to bond for up to $19 million without a vote of the people, but the repayment of that bond comes from the operating dollars. And if we have to use that money for capital, it's money that otherwise would have been going to reimburse the local districts for the cost of providing mandatory special education services. So again, this is really important to all nine districts in Washtenaw County. It's important to the children that we serve in High Point. And the election is on Tuesday, six days away. We've been doing a lot to try to get information out to people. We've had quite a few inquiries through Let's Talk on our website, people wondering about specifics. We've had some questions about, well, couldn't you use another facility? But given the toileting requirements, we have to have bathrooms for every classroom. We have a lot of other needs that make it, so you can't just take a vacant elementary building and convert it into something that would work for High Point. And so at the end of the day, we've been able to answer those, and most people have been appreciative of the responses. We also want to remind people that under new Michigan law, if you are not registered to vote now, it's not too late. You can register to vote all the way up until August 6. If you're not going to be here, you can vote absentee tomorrow, on Friday. You can vote absentee on the day of the election by going to the clerk if you can't go to your polling station. So there are more opportunities for people to express their, their opinions on this, and so we just want to make sure that individuals have the information they need. We want to answer any question. We certainly hope you and others from the community will come out for open houses, and I would welcome any questions that you have about the proposal.
Trustees, floor is open for questions. Trustee Lightfoot.
Thank you so much. Thank you for bringing this to us. I'm interested, is this working?
It is working. Okay. Oh, there it goes. Okay, thank you so much. I'm interested in, maybe you can help us, and others as well, what you all use as far as variables to determine what will be needed years out. At work, we're dealing with that. Several years ago, my cities wanted streetcars, and they wanted all these types of modes of transit, so a whole lot of bond money went into it, and now those cities are trying to figure out how to deal with young people who prefer to Uber versus ride in the mechanism. So with the social, emotional, financial, academic changes occurring in our society so rapidly, and with the physical challenges we're seeing with more students, how do you better assure the public that we are putting in place what's needed for 50 years out?
So given what we've learned over time, and the student population that we served before, those, the students that we served when the building opened, they're being educated in your home districts now. Is it possible that 50 years from now, we would have advances in technology so that every student could be educated in their home district? I'm not so sure that that's the case, because of the, the, as long as we have school districts structured as they currently are, the smaller the district, the less capacity they have. If you think about nursing support, speech, PTO, and the intensive needs of our students with the most significant disabilities. And so we're designing the facility so that it can adapt to those changing needs. What we've, I mean, that's why the corridors are much wider than anything that I've seen before that are proposed, because we want to be sure that we're able to adapt to changing technology and have appropriate space to house and store adaptive equipment that we've, we've got so much of it now, because it's used on a regular basis, we have no place to put it. So it's kind of stacked up in ways that don't make any sense. We've done the best that we can, Simone, to figure out ways to best position the building for the future. Can't guarantee 100%, but we have been intentional about the ways in which that the building can be modified over time in order to adapt to those changing environments.
That's good. So modifications and adaptability is one.
Yes.
The smaller districts needing assistance is a whole nother, and that's an excellent one, because particularly as financial situations change for districts in the state, I would expect that even our, not necessarily smaller districts, but mid-sides districts could do a better job or need assistance. We're always talking about ways in which we can do a better job concentrating services so that they are not as dispersed, particularly around counties or around intermediate school districts. How can we do a better consolidating? And so I appreciate that. And then the, the storage component, I mean, I, I appreciate- I mean, I appreciate where you're adding, appropriate space that we know we need now. Thank you. And will you have a, well, this is the presentation because you guys are moving really fast.
Yes.
I'm used to big, old, pretty color thingies, so thank you for your, no, thank you, I'm not making fun of your rendition, this is good. I appreciate you. We'll be supporting, my family will absolutely be supporting.
Appreciate that very much.
Supporting this effort. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Also, I've just been informed that there are signs available for our yards and cars so that we can actively do what we can. Trustee Kelly, you have a question?
Hello. On, I guess the slides aren't numbered, but the one about what happens if the bond does not pass.
Right.
There is this special education operating millage, and I understand that that would then be used to do the required items. I see the $18 million number. Is that the types of renovations you talked about fixing the broken things in the current building? Or are you talking about using the operating millage to do the new building that's drawn up?
Yeah, there's no way we could use the operating millage to do the new building. So this is really doing the repairs. So it's the roofing, it's the heating and cooling units, it's all of the infrastructure. And there will be some things that we can do to classrooms, but I can't make any classroom bigger. I can't make any hallway wider, so we can't take care of those other fundamental problems with the building. We just would be able to ensure that heating and cooling would work so that it's, from that perspective, the building is still something that we can use, but it won't attend to the other dysfunctions in the current structure.
And so anybody who says, oh, well, they'll do it anyway, it doesn't matter.
No, no.
That's a misnomer.
That is absolutely a misnomer because...
It may literally, you know, put a plug in the dyke, but it is not going to optimally serve the students' needs.
Not at all.
And that scenario then takes away from the district's ability to serve the students who are in the district's buildings.
Right. Absolutely. Everyone loses in that environment because we're taking money that voters authorize for operating purposes and putting it into a facility that no longer meets the needs of the students that it's designed to serve.
Absolutely. That's such an important point for people to understand. It won't happen anyway.
No.
It's something very, very different. And then do you have an opposition campaign?
As far as I know, there's no organized opposition. There are some people who don't support, and they've shared that with me, but no organized opposition. We have more people who have asked questions like, are you sure .37 mils is enough to be able to do this? And we remind them that Washtenaw County's tax base is pretty healthy, and so it allows us to be able to do something like this at a reasonable price point.
Fantastic. Well, my family, too, will be supporting this, so thank you for presenting tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any additional questions or comments?
Thank you, Dr. Menzel. We really appreciate you coming and making the pitch, and we'll do what we can to support.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your support, and anytime you have questions, feel free to give us a call, shoot me an email. We want to be of service to you and appreciate all the work that you do. I know summer is going very quickly, and there's a lot on your plates as well, so best wishes as you move out of summer and into the beginning of the new school year.
Thank you very much.
And up next, we have our second briefing items. Have there been any changes since the last we met?
Thank you, Madam President. We were hoping to provide a little bit more information on the electronic timekeeping system. Madam President, is that all right?
Yes.
Very good. So we discussed this back on June 26th at our last board meeting, our previous board meeting, and Ms. Amanda Matheson presented it at that time. You had several questions, and Ms. Matheson, Mr. Dmitru, and I have been working on those responses. I was hoping that Ms. Hilton could put up the return on investment component because, trustees, one of the items that we want to just revisit this evening is how, it is our practice, trustees, that we do our very best not to bring you any expense to the general fund if we can absolutely help it. When we have to bring one, we always want to show the value or the return on that. So I'm going to ask that Mr. Dmitru and Ms. Matheson just walk you through how they have projected the savings that would more than pay for the expense. And you also have this document attached to board docs, and you can see that if we look at a five-year commitment, and by the way, the contract is for three years with two optional renewal years, but the total savings, return on investment, is $413,000 over the course of the five years. So certainly, this is projected to more than pay for the investment that's required here to get it adopted. And so with that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Dmitru and Ms. Matheson to just clarify the savings, and then, Madam President, we'll be available for any questions the board may have.
Good evening, trustees.
Good evening.
So you have in front of you the return on investment worksheet that we provided after the follow, the previous board meeting. And the first section that we have here is the manual computation of hours. All three of these sections are based on industry standards and were provided to us from Time Clock Plus. We base this on 500 employees using hourly timesheets on a regular recurring basis for their primary pay method. And you can see in there that this is looking at total pay periods of 26 over the course of a school year or an entire fiscal year, looking at 65 minutes per employee per year, the 500 employees, and ultimately using a $20 per hour, which is actually a conservative dollar amount that we're using in this calculation because that's a straight wage amount, not including FICA and retirement, and arriving at a total cost savings of $10,833 just in the amount of time that it takes for individuals to do manual calculation and then review and approval of their manual timesheets. Then as we move down to expense number two is the error factor. Again, we're using 500 employees as the base throughout these calculations, and this is also based on industry standards for payroll, and we're looking at $91,875. And this is based on a 1% error rate, and these are real dollars that we'll be saving. Of course, it's an estimate for the amount of corrections that end up needing to be made when people are doing manual calculations for their timesheets. And the third component is labeled lost time, and you can see the total calculation there for the amount of time that people are putting on their timesheets for which they're not actually working is estimated to amount to about $39,375. Again, here, we're using an hourly rate only of $15 per hour, so that's also not including FICA and retirement, which would be an additional expense. When we add the three together, it comes to total annual savings of $142,063, I'm sorry, And our first year cost is a little bit higher because of the initial implementation costs that we have. So we do have a cost outlay, which we are, have in the memo there, that we are using bond funds for a significant portion of the expenses in year one, with the general fund kicking in in year two to take care of the annual subscription and maintenance costs.
Trustees, any questions, concerns? Trustee Kelly.
I appreciate your patience on this one. On the top of that second page, it says your estimated annual cost. That's the estimated annual cost of our status quo, right? That's what it costs us to add up manually calculating the hours, the cost of errors, and the cost of lost time. Is that what that means?
That's the savings that we would have by going to an electronic system.
Okay. It was the word "cost" that was getting me. I was thinking that's what we were paying for the system, but that's not it. It's the cost of doing it the way we do it now.
Correct, yes.
Thank you. That is exactly the handholding I needed.
All right.
Trustee Lazarus.
Thank you for preparing this. I just have a question. I'm a little, my numbers don't seem to be adding up here, and maybe I'm reading this wrong. On the, and I do that often, so forgive me. On the memo, it says that there's $211,534.61 for hardware purchase, so that would be an initial cost, right? And then there is an annual cost of $20,237.60 annually, so that would be multiplied by five, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then the $110,237.60 is also an annual cost for the subscription and maintenance that's necessary, and that's multiplied by five, correct?
So that would be for the remaining four years. The 211 is all-inclusive of the subscription and implementation costs. Then for years two, three, four, and five, $110,000 for the annual maintenance and subscription for all employees.
So that would be times four, or that's a total number?
Yes. No, times four.
Times four. So if you add those up minus a 100, because I added that in, so it'd be, I come to about, over the five years, if we were to keep the contract for five years, you're at about $700 and, like, three-quarters of a million dollars.
Yes.
Basically.
So our quote for the recommendation is for all school employees, which is about 3,000 users, to have login for the electronic timekeeping system. The return on investment is based on our regular full-time employees that are using the manual process right now, which is about 500, whose primary pay is based solely on paper timesheets. So we do have, this was a more reasonable savings. It is conservative, but we did the calculation at a lower number of employees for the return on investment component compared to what we're seeking in a recommendation for the number of employees that would have licenses to use the software.
So the three-quarters of a million is for 3,000 user licenses?
Yes, and that is a maximum. We will be adding in the employees as we have them loaded into the system and have all the training completed. So we will be starting with the smaller number and gradually working our way up.
And how quickly will we be working our way up to 3,000?
By the end of our first year, we would like to have all employees in the system.
On the system.
Yes.
So this return on investment of $400,000, $413,000, is based on only 500 employees.
That is correct.
So that would be compounded over the 3,000 to get to 3,000. Okay. You're confusing me.
I'm sorry.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I might be a little slow, too, but, not that you're slow. So what I'm trying to do is just match these numbers back. So this 106, 845 is coming from where? When you look at the estimated return on investment in the second year, third year?
Yep, this is right there on, can you stop right there, Tiffany? Thank you. So it's looking at the, I'm sorry, go up just a little bit so we can see the savings number also. Okay, so it's looking at the savings number of $142,000 less the annual cost of 156 the first year, and then down in the middle section, you can see years two, three, four, and five. Based on 500 employees only, it would be a cost of $35,237.6. So it's looking at 500 employees across the board for this calculation.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
So if I can just step in here, if I just did a quick calculation. So we're really looking, if we were to look at the full 3,000 users, we're looking at a savings of, a conservative savings of about 2.5 or 2.4 over the five-year period.
Yes. The more employees we have in the system, the larger the savings is.
Okay. So the expense of the three-quarters over the five years is offsetted, offset by the 2.4 of what we're saving based on the way they calculated here.
Right.
So we are saving about, you know, do the calculation, quick, Mario's.
I think when we did the calculation for every employee, it was about a million and a half in savings.
A million, okay. It's a little over that.
So we just wanted to demonstrate 500. We thought just showing a million and a half would have been too much, but by showing the 500 what the results are. And we're going to take our time. I think in the first year, we're going to put the 500 people on that we know that are, you know, are hourly all the time. But we do get timesheets for other employees for duties that they have, that they're paid hourly, even though their salary, they have other duties that are hourly, so.
That was my question.
So, but we're going to make sure everything is working right, and then we'll bring in more people. But the more people you have in the system, the more, it's about, currently about $30 per employee, so the savings are significantly higher than $30 per employee. And the savings we show doesn't even include, even with this savings, FICA and retirement, which is about 50% of the salaries.
So the $110,000 in the annual subscriptions from two through five is including 3,000 users?
Yes. And we'll only pay what we, what employees have put in. We're not going to pay that, which is, as we progress, but we wanted to make sure that we have the funds available to do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Trustee Lightfoot.
Thanks so much. This is more for Dr. Swift, and we can talk in our individual meetings. I'm interested in how we can convey to the public the money that we're saving, what we do with it, or what happens with it, or what it contributes to, and ways in which we can actually track, are we saving what we thought we would realize that saving? We may need to be creative, but I'm just...
Love that idea. So what's happening to the money that we save? How much are we saving? And then what are we doing with that?
Thank you so much.
Very good.
All right. I have two, possibly three, questions because the meeting was a month ago. Remind us again how employees would clock in and out.
So we have three options that will be available. One will be using a district computer or laptop where they can log in and clock their time in and out, change, only on the hourly work, yes. Another option, and the interface for all three of these will look the exact same regardless of which device they're using. We will also have wall-mounted time clocks where they can log in and out. And then the third option, if an employee chooses, but it is absolutely not mandatory, if they have a smartphone, there's an app that they're able to download, and they can do all of their time entries from there as well. And this is, in fact, only for the people that are submitting hourly timesheets for the masses of our employees that are on contracts. They do not have to do this as a part of their regular duties to be paid.
I believe the last time we also talked about either the percentage of people that report their time incorrectly or just totally forgot. I couldn't, I couldn't recall if we had an answer to that, but...
So the error question, or not the fraud question, but the error, the fraud question?
The error.
The error question.
So that is based on national payroll standards, and it's a 1% error rate.
So, okay, so I just wanted to know if we had an actual percentage for us and not the...
We don't. It's going to be very difficult to be exact because you've got to run both systems at the same time, and then you have to compare.
Yeah.
What we are going to do is, next year, when we implement the 500 first, then we'll compare the two years. It's not going to be exact, but it will give us an idea. Because in order to get exact, you have to run both systems simultaneously and see what the results are. But we can make some rough estimates. If we assume everybody works the same time in one year, you're going to have to compare two years and then see what the hours, how the hours compare. And then we can kind of estimate... Uh, and then we can kind of estimate and generalize. It's not going to be totally exact, but it's going to be very, very close.
And then my final question is, how difficult is it for an employee to fraudently report time? It's not working. There we go.
With this, uh, or right now?
With this new system.
Uh, go ahead.
So it will, uh, I suppose there's always a way, but there is going to be geo-fencing. So in terms of, regardless of what device you're using, you can't be sitting at Panera twenty miles away and logging your time. Um, so we will have the geo-fencing on there that will require them be on our district network in order to be logging their time in or out. Um, it will also be connected to their badge if they're using the wall clock. Um, they'll be able to swipe their employee ID badge, which is what will log them in and out. And we can also do two-factor authentication to ensure that the employee is the person doing their logging in and out and not a friend doing it for them.
Thank you, I appreciate you answering that question. Do you have another question?
No, I just wanted to bring up that geo-fancy because that was key.
Okay, this item is in second briefing, so we will be voting on this tonight. Any additional questions, comments? Thank you so much. Now move on to the consent agenda. We have, uh, Ms. Hilton?
Approval of Tech twelve dash zero four-one and nineteen dash zero zero-eight electronic timekeeping system and approval of minutes from the June twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen regular meeting.
Would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Ms. Hilton, may we have a roll call? Oh, I need a motion, I'm sorry.
A motion to accept.
Thank you. Trustee Lazarus, motions, do we have a second? Trustee Gainer, seconds. May we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Lightfoot?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
President Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Kelly?
Yes.
Trustee Gainer?
Yes.
Trustee Lazarus?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you. Trustees, we have two items for board action tonight. First is the approval of administrative contract. Dr. Swift.
Uh, thank you, Madam President, and trustees. Um, as you know, we experienced a retirement in June of Ms. Lee Ann Dickinson Kelly, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. Uh, trustees, you're well aware that we posted that position, uh, nationally and have conducted multiple rounds of interviews in the district. Um, and I want to, this evening, thank, um, everyone who applied for the position and also want to thank the many individuals who served on interview committees. I know that summers are busy and folks have lots to do besides sitting under fluorescent lighting, uh, in one of our offices interviewing. So I really do thank members from all employee groups who made, uh, it their business to engage in this way. Trustees, you're familiar, uh, because we've reviewed the contract, which is attached to this evening's agenda, and it is my, uh, privilege to recommend Ms. Dawn Linden, uh, for this position. And with that, Mr. Combs is coming forward if you should have any questions. Madam President, thank you.
Trustees, are there any questions? Ms. Hilton, may we have a? Motion, please. Trustee Gainer?
I, I don't have questions. I do, is there a chance where we won't be able to explain our vote? I know that's an expected aspect of it.
Sure.
And should I do it now, or?
Discussion.
Are you going to have other discussion?
Discussion. You can, you can speak now.
Does she have to move first?
Should we move first?
Yeah.
I move.
Thank you. Trustee Lightfoot moves, trustee Kelly second.
Trustee Lightfoot?
No, discussion. We're going to have discussion.
Oh, sorry.
But trustee Lightfoot moved, uh, trustee Kelly second.
Go ahead, trust again.
Okay, thank you. For the last, I don't know, ten, twenty years, the Ed reform movement has swept over the country, resulting in more mandates for teachers, more standardized, high-stakes testing. Um, we've seen it in this district over the last, I don't know, ten years, give or take, with more mandates for teachers and more restrictions. I will tell you, as, as you all know, I came to this position on the board after a thirty-eight year teaching career. And it was these conditions which frankly prevented me from teaching most effectively the students in front of me that led me to accept a call to run for the board. I, because of that, this position, curriculum and instruction is extremely important to There's been, uh, extreme frustration, dissatisfaction among the teaching staff before and since I've taken office, um, with the top-down direction of the district. I'm looking, given that we need to make a change to have one that will significantly change the course, that will allow teachers to teach and use their professional expertise with certainly the support they need and deserve from the administration. Um, I have, I have some hopeful things, um, but I want to say with the candidate that's recommended, given what I've observed, given her work, although there's been some, um, talk about more collaboration, some possible movement, I'm, I'm not convinced it's the degree necessary. Um, so I'm not going to be able to support this recommendation. I hope I'm wrong. I hope I can say in the next year or two that I'm mistaken. I did have a, a discussion with Dr. Swift, thank you, who says that her vision is to work more with teachers, putting teachers at the center of, of changes, of policy, working with, not, uh, directing to teachers, that there must and will be collaboration. I certainly hope that's true, and that's just not rhetoric that allows for more top-down direction. But in the communication, in the, um, curriculum vitae from the candidate who before here worked for, um, several years for a charter company instituting many of the, uh, Ed reform policies, the best I can tell, I have not had a chance to talk to any of the, um, to be privy to the, any of the information from the interview, from the interviews, or to talk with the candidate herself about this. But I'm, I'm not confident there's, there's more than kind of jargon rhetoric. I, again, I hope I'm wrong, but for these reasons, I am not going to support this recommendation. Thank you.
Trustee Lightfoot.
Thank you so much. We trustees all have the opportunity and wherewithal to support who we'd like and why we'd like. I think it's unfair, though, trustee, for you to admit you haven't talked to the person. You don't know the process that was used, yet you assert these, these notions. That's unfair. I think that's unfair. You have a right to do it, but I think it's unfair. We have a process in place by which candidates go through. The superintendent stays out of that generally. The board stays out of that generally because the process is expected to work so that we can face very directly when folk challenge us on decisions that we make. We have a transparent, consistent process that we use. And so if this particular candidate rose through that process and became the selection to be recommended to us, because again, we don't get involved at that level, uh, then we either trust the, and respect the process that we have in place, or we don't. The other thing that I continue to share with you, trustee, you've been on this board long enough to bring us specific facts, specific facts, and to continue to come to the board table and assert these notions that are out there, but not bring specific facts either to the table and, or to the superintendent directly, so that you're not doing what we see so much of the public who are far less informed than we are, who have far less access to the documents than we do, who just espouse things, just assert things just because they feel a certain way. That's fine if that's what the public chooses to do, but we as stewards of this district have a far larger responsibility and obligation to do the research, to do the studying, to do the conversations necessary, so that when we assert something, we're asserting something that's based in fact, demonstrated fact. And so I just want to share that. I am open to any concerns you raise with your ear to the teachers. I just need you to bring some substance versus asserting things on a regular that we just can't sink our teeth. I can find a way to sink my teeth in to help assuage some of those, those concerns, and I'll leave it at that.
Trustee Johnson.
Thank you. So, um, I also believe that we need processes in place and, um, and I do think that when we're in situations where people will challenge our process and say that we were unfair in our processes, that we're able to go back and look at those processes. So when we have candidates that come through and they are vetted through that process, we should be able to support them as well. Um, I do echo, uh, what trustee Lightfoot says in that, um, you know, we're not involved in, in that process. We don't sit in on some of these things, so if we have trust in the fidelity of that process, we should be able to, to move forward without, uh, without hesitation. So, um, you know, I understand that there are, you know, I, I've talked to, uh, teachers and, and different people in the community as well, um, and I do think that we need to look at ways that we're, that we're handling our policy and, and be less top-down. But I do think that that's not always the, the, the battle that's being, um, determined in every decision. And so, so I, I fully support the, uh, the recommendation of not just the superintendent, but everybody that was on, that was on the committee and, uh, and feel like we need to put that support behind, um, behind the individual because we want the district to be successful.
Thank you. Trustee Gainer.
Just a quick, very quick comment. I, I weighed, um, listing specific items, specific criticisms. I don't think there's anything to be gained by doing that. I don't want to bring individuals. Um, it's still a matter of interpretation, how these go, so, um, there's information I don't have. I understand it's not our decision, but it is our decision to monitor and approve important decisions, so that's what I'm basing it on. But I, I don't, I don't, there's nothing to be gained by, um, listing possible negatives or, or criticisms, and I don't want to go there.
Thank you. Well, trustee Kelly.
I'd just like to say that, um, I was really excited to see this candidate raised up through the process. I've, you know, of course, worked with her in the capacity of a trustee, but I've also, um, watched her as an observer in the wild. I've been a, a parent at meetings that she has been in charge of. I've, I've, um, been an attendee at meetings that she's, she's been head of, and she is a hard-working consummate professional. So I'm, I'm very excited for her to take on this role, and I'm, I'm happy to support this recommendation tonight. Thank you.
Before I call the vote, I just wanted to say that I'm also in support of this candidate. She served the district well the last eight years, um, and that is commendable. Um, and I do appreciate the committee's work on this and bringing this forward. And with that being said, Ms. Hilton, may we have a roll call?
Trustee Lightfoot?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
President Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Kelly?
Yes.
Trustee Gainer?
No.
Trustee Lazarus?
Yes.
Motion carries, five-one.
Thank you. Trustees, next, we will have to, uh, vote ourselves into closed session for the board meeting on August the fourteenth. I believe it's for attorney-client privilege.
It is.
Yes.
And we may have a brief item at that time, but we'll, uh, Madam President and I will brief ahead as we confirm that.
Okay. Trust, trustee Gainer?
This is a motion to hold in closed session. We're not going into closed session now. Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Got a glitch there.
May.
Yes.
Thank you, trustees. Uh, we very much appreciate your flexibility. This was not an evening that was on your calendar, so, uh, it's with a great deal of, um, reservation that we impend further on your summer. It is an evening when the attorney was available. Um, so I very much appreciate, I know that you all, as well as Mr. Combs and I, have been anxious to have some face-to-face time with the attorney, uh, regarding, uh, pressing matters. So that will be the fourteenth at four-thirty, and between now and then, I'll work with exec. There might be one other matter of the additional administrative hire that you're aware of, uh, that we would get done while you're gathered on that evening. So, um, I, I would just want to make sure if there were any questions, but.
Any questions or comments? All right, may we have a motion for this item?
So move.
Trustee Johnson moves, trustee Lightfoot seconds. May we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Lightfoot?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
President Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Kelly?
Yes.
Trustee Gainer?
Yes.
Trustee Lazarus?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous.
All right. Are there any items for agenda planning? Trustee Gainer?
Independent of the public commentary, I do want to bring up to the board, um, a discussion of our FOIA policies and practices, um, in that, um, we are responsible for what happens in the district, and I want to make sure we are informed and, um, are clear on what information the public and we ourselves need to be receiving and, and at what time. So I'd, I'd like that up for board discussion at some point.
I believe that will be a part of the legal briefing.
I'm, I'm happy to take that as a task and work with Mr. Combs about how best to share that. We do have very, uh, regulated, very specific, um, policies, laws, policies and practices.
Sure.
We'll be happy to, uh, prepare that at the will of the board, um, at the right time to share with you all.
Thank you. And one more thing, um, and again, this is preliminary. We heard from parents of law in school who truly have been through a lot in recent months about, um, this wasn't related to the planned expansion, but what was brought up with data they serve, they supplied, um, that to my, as to my knowledge, I hadn't been informed of, we hadn't been informed of, is the trend toward, um, um, a, a greater difference in, um, racial and socioeconomic segregations at some of our elementary schools. And I'd like to, the board, to discuss this and how we, um, how, whether we're comfortable with it, whether there are ways we can address it, how our views are. Um, again, as part of our monitoring process, this is a very complex issue. There's many aspects that, obviously now is not the time to go into it, but I do think it's of enough importance to take a look at it from the board.
That was multi-levelled, so exactly which, which discussion would you like to have?
I would like to examine, there, there's particularly a chart I can forward to Dr. Swift to forward about, um, the increasing, um, I don't know what word to use, disparities, segregation of race and class at elementary schools, and how our policies are impacting that, or if they are.
Dr. Swift?
I believe, just to help me get, uh, focused on, to make sure I'm hearing correctly, um, with the enrollment report each- with the enrollment report each year, we do report racial composite at each and every school as well as the total at each level and total in the district. And we also report the poverty impact at each and every school, at each and every level, elementary, middle and high, and total in the district. So I think I'm familiar with the chart you're referring to that was shared with us. I'm hearing you say you would like to, and I guess it would be to exec, to determine where this would go, but a discussion of all of that information?
All of that, along with how our policies are impacting it, if they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lazarus?
Thank you. I would like to bring to the board for discussion the possibility of implementing a filter-first policy to actually take advantage of our hydration stations that we've installed into all the schools to ensure that students, until we can get a more established long-term plan in place for the actual physical buildings, to actually adopt a filter-first policy. And I've got some documentation that we can look over in exec, wherever you want to put it. But it's a program that has been thoughtfully figured out. We can kind of follow the procedures. It's not something that we have to really do a lot of thinking on.
Okay, and is this in addition to our current water?
It's really just taking advantage of all the work, the hard work that the board and the district has already done in installing the current hydration stations. And it's an educational process to make sure that students and teachers and staff understand where to get their drinking water from versus, you know, using other sources. So using filtered water versus non-filtered water.
Understood. Trustee Johnson?
This actually may not be for agenda planning. And so, but Dr. Swift, you can advise, there were, there were parents here that did express some concern about the safety at Lawton and expressed a desire to either come together and be told information or to have a plan of action going into the fall. And so, you know, I don't know if the board needs to handle that or if that should be something that we hear from you. I'd love to hear that because I do understand and empathize with the parents and staff who might feel threatened by some of the rhetoric that's coming out. I know some of, you know, some people even on the board have been, have been attacked in certain ways on social media and otherwise. So we should, we should absolutely be on top of that and figure out what's going to happen. And I look forward to communication about what the plan is going forward.
Thank you, Trustee Johnson. As the trustees were copied last week, I sent a communication to the staff first, to the community second, reiterating that we are working on this every day. We are limited at this point. And we will be, the very minute that I'm able to, we will be sharing information. We are not resting until we have a plan in place. And I think the trustees know, because I've been briefing you almost daily with extensive briefings of our work, this is a very serious matter, a very important matter. Student safety is our top priority at every school in this district. So I appreciate you raising it and look forward to our continued conversation. We will be on top of this every day between now and the start of school. And as soon as we are able, we will be out to visit with parents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, items from the board. Trustee Kelly?
Thank you. I'd like to report out on the first meeting of the trustee book club. Trustee Baskett and I joined with a few other trustees from our neighboring districts and had a great discussion on our first book. I would like to re-invite anyone who's interested to join us in our future book clubs. We are going to be covering two topics in the next couple of months. One is the use and overuse of technology and screens by our young people. And the other is probably to read the book Relentless: Changing Lives by Disrupting the Educational Norm, which is a summer 2019 release by Hamish Brewer. I can forward the email on to trustees who are interested. Just let me know. And it was really neat to have these kind of conversations with people who know the work we do and we could have a conversation about the book at a level I can't do at home or with friends. So I encourage anyone who's interested in those topics to join us. Thank you.
Can you restate the name of the current book one more time?
Relentless: Changing Lives by Disrupting the Educational Norm by Hamish Brewer.
The one you guys just met about?
The one we just read about was called Disintegration by Eugene...
Robinson.
Robinson, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the one I was hoping to hear, yeah.
This is...
Trustee?
Hamish Brewer, aka the tattooed skateboarding principal. Just so y'all know.
He's got some great YouTube videos up too, if you want to get like a 16-minute taste of what he's all about.
Very interesting. Anyone else? Okay. I had two items I wanted to report about. As you all know, every summer, we take a group of kids down to Hampton University's Barney Smart Band Camp. And this year was no different. And it was fun and exciting and hot. And I have a few videos that I will share with you all. The kids absolutely loved it. We even have a student from Huron who is now committed to going to Hampton University. He has a full ride, which is a total sum of almost $44,000. And he cannot wait. In fact, on the ride home, all he talked about was how he missed his home by the sea already. So it's wonderful when you can be able to pour into someone else's life. And the give back is even more amazing. Also, we have 20 kids from our district now, 17 from Huron and three from community, spending the week, I believe it was Sunday through tomorrow, they're coming home tomorrow, they're at the Michigan Interscholastic Press Association camp. And as you all know, both schools have newspapers. One is nationally known. And these students are there, being fed to by some of the best in the business. And I just cannot wait to read their publications when they return. And I'm going to join them tomorrow at their closing ceremony so that I can see all that they have learned while they were there this week. That, there are no more? Ms. Hilton, I'm sorry, Dr. Swift?
I apologize, trustees. There were just a couple of things that I wanted to make sure were on your calendar because we don't get to see each other quite as often during the summer. But before that, Trustee Gaynor, I want to clarify that in responding to your clarification about the cameras, I pointed that way and I should have pointed right here by Trustee Lightfoot because during public commentary, it is always our goal to get the front of the person, not the back of their head. So I just want to clarify that. And I want to give a shout out and thank you to Mr. Scott Nadeau, who very thanklessly proceeds with this taping every single week so that we are sure, despite CTN's effectiveness or lack thereof, that we have a record of our public work together. Secondly, September 12th, because it's coming right toward the beginning of the year, trustees, this DTE got ahead of us on this announcement because evidently they were excited and we're more excited. But we've been approved, as you know, for grants for electric buses. And September 12th is a big celebration in Lansing with the governor and actually, I don't know the title, but the chief governor person from Ontario, is that right? Or from Quebec? Quebec? And DTE and everybody in Lansing to celebrate the dawning of electric buses in Michigan for schoolchildren. And Inverbrook Public Schools is one of very few districts and will be getting 10, no, I'm sorry, four electric buses that will go into immediate service. And trustees, I have asked for us to have a briefing on this. It's a very complicated process that we've been through and has a lot of moving parts to it of different folks paying for different components. So I just want to get that on your calendar. They've only given us 9 to 3 as the time in Lansing. And they say that between now and September 12th, they'll narrow that down. It won't really take six hours to celebrate electric buses in Lansing. So I thank you. Yesterday, when I was at Safety Town, the four and five-year-olds were lining up to learn how to board a bus. And then they were driving around the block and then they were learning how to disembark a bus properly. I thought, as an old middle school principal, that that would have been a good lesson for middle schoolers as well as four and five-year-olds. But at any rate, it flashed through my brain, standing there yesterday, Mr. Dimitru, how exciting it will be to see them boarding an electric bus and doing a much better job for our environment with that. So get that on your calendar and thank you, Madam President.
Ms. Hilton, are there any items left undone?
No, ma'am.
All right, may we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Trustee Lazarus, motions. Trustee Johnson, seconds. May we have a roll call? Oh, we just, we just want to, we just want to adjourn? Okay, all right.
7:15.